I'd like to call Sumter County Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, May twenty eighth. Order the completed standing room with invocations and the pledge of allegiance. The county council meeting. Invocations.
Let us pray. Out to your kind help, Father, to acknowledge you as the one in whom we live, move, and have our need. We acknowledge that the earth is yours and the goodness thereof. And we thank you for assigning us as stewards of what you've blessed us with. And as we begin this meeting this evening, we invite your presence and ask that you help us to look at our agenda, each item, with open minds, with understanding, with clarity of thought, and with kindness, so that we can make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. I ask your blessings upon every one under the saddle of our voice. We thank you for all that you've done for us and all that you're going to do. We thank you for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon this county that we are able to divvy it out in a way that is pleasing in your sight. And we know that you will help us to do just that. That's what is pleasing in your sight. We ask you these things in the name of Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. Do the two. The number of the public sector that we are discussing this discussion during the holiday debate, please say aye. We have a motion to adjourn to Tuesday. Sumner? Aye. We have a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, minutes on my regular meeting, May fourteenth, county council workshop, May fourteenth, and the county council budget workshop, May twenty, if any discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. White.
Point of order. Um, on the bottom of county council agendas, as they said, questions by the audience will be answered. Uh, I'm wondering when that takes place. I've been contacted by a couple of people who have asked questions and have not gotten responses. And so I'm wondering when that takes place and how it takes place. Is it in writing? Is it a verbal communication? I'm listening.
If there's any questions, answers after the meeting. If there were any questions that were no answers, you need to be brought to our attention and we will address them.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm bringing it to your attention.
Okay.
There were questions presented at the last council meeting by the folks from Kangaroo Lane that were not addressed. There were questions asked at the last council meeting about the stacks for the Dozier that were not responded to, have not received anything in writing. And so I would like to know when both of those requests would be made. And by the way, Mr. Chairman, I've also been given information, a document from the folks on Kangaroo Lane.
Which we have seen before.
That says that the road was related by the county since nineteen ninety-nine. I know the county has taken a position that it is not a county road, but I would submit to you that if the county has been maintaining the road since nineteen ninety-nine up until this day, I kind of see that like a common law mare. And we have some responsibility to continue maintaining that road. But the answers were not provided to the good people on Kangaroo Road.
We've given them the answers to that, Mr. White.
I'm sorry?
We've given them the answers to that several times in the, in the meetings. We've seen those documents before.
Right.
Nothing has changed from our response from our staff.
So, Mr. Chairman, what I'm saying to you now, though, is that if the county's position is that it's not a county road, even though they put the county sign up for twenty-three years, we have some exposure, and I want to have that discussion. Do I need to request it, that be put on the agenda?
No, we can discuss it in the appropriate committee meeting, as we always do.
Why? Mr. Chairman, why does it have to be discussed in committee?
Because that's where it's appropriate, okay?
It was discussed in front of council.
Well.
The question was asked in front of council.
Mr. Washington, you know what the procedures are. Why, why, why do you want to make a show?
Because the constituents, because the constituents said they have not gotten a response, number one. And number two, we have not lived up to our responsibility to address the issue of having a sign there for twenty-three years that was a county sign.
That was discussed in the committee meeting, and we gave them the answers, but.
It wasn't voting on.
There's nothing to vote on.
I, I have a motion I want to vote on.
Well, we'll discuss it in the committee meeting.
Well, I want my motion on the floor, on the floor for.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I have been put on that. I feel kind of bad when I had members who was at the last meeting, who spoke very much to me and showed me the document where it says that, uh, uh, you know, the comments that they made, that they would be addressed after the end of the meeting. And they said, well, when do we have time? Where's the people? Everybody's gone. So how do we address them? That was my concern. And, uh, so I, I understand where Councilman Washington is coming from, because people are asking him those questions. We gotta, you know, if we gonna say we're gonna do something, then we got to do it.
Absolutely.
Okay? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Chairman, how we move forward with that issue?
We will put it on the appropriate committee. And you can announce to your constituents when that committee is, and it's open to the public, and we will discuss it with staff.
So are we changing the rules again?
If the rules are.
If a member wants to put something on the agenda, it can be put on the agenda. Are you now making another change in the rules, Mr. Chairman? I would like it on the council agenda. That is a request.
Yeah. And what, what was the motion, sir?
And the second, and the second will come.
What is the motion? Does it get put on? First, I, I got no problem with it, but just.
Is that, is that part of our rules? I need to say what the motion is now?
No, I was just saying. If, if I have a motion. I, I, you can just put it on, we can just put it on the agenda, Mr. White.
Thank you. That's all I ask. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Chairman, now, look at our agenda, and I'm asking the audience, look at back page, item number thirteen. Read item number thirteen. Public comment. Citizens desire to speak during public comments, or limit it up to three minutes. Comments ought to be made through the chairman of Sumter County Council. If there are any questions, they will be answered after the meeting. After the meeting. And that's what the citizens came up to me and said, when is after the meeting? So if we're gonna put this here, and we have to let them know when we gonna answer it, because we disappeared. We all went out, left, and the citizens were here.
It was the favorite staff is who answers the questions, and they were still here.
They wasn't here.
They weren't.
When I was talking to the citizens, everybody was gone. I was in here by myself, talking to those citizens. They, everybody was gone.
With, Mr. Chairman.
So I don't know. I'm just saying, if we put it there, and we need to make sure that we are viable, or not take it off. That's all. Don't leave the citizens confused.
I, I mean, complete agreement with Councilman from Myrtle Beach Highway, but my second point of order is our requested information, the facts on the Dozier, I've not received yet. We've done point of order, Mr. Chairman. I have also, I've also requested the history on private roads, which I've not received, Mr. Chairman. I've also requested the number of roads, private dirt roads, that are in poor condition. And I've not received that information either. So my question to you, Mr. Chairman, is when will I receive all of that information?
Councilman Washington, I'd be more than happy to come by the office here, all the information that we have available, and then let you know the strengths or the issues related to so many other questions. But I'll be more than happy to entertain that with you one on one, sir.
Last point of order for now, Mr. Chairman. I understand that there's some correspondence sent to the Attorney General regarding private roads.
Yes, correct.
I like copies of that. And I should have been sent copies of that, since I've been the lead on this issue. I'm sure it wasn't an oversight, but let's see if we can get you that information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
First item on the agenda, RZ twenty-four oh six. Yeah. Do we have to put it on? Yes, yes, yeah. Okay. I don't have a vote. Uh, regarding motions approved in minutes? We have a motion in the session. All the favorable approvals, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Truman, RZ twenty-four oh six.
RZ twenty-four oh six, thirty-five twenty and thirty-five eighty Thomas Sumter Highway. The applicant is Miss Lily and War, the property owner. This is a request to rezone a portion of two split zone parcels from agricultural conservation to general commercial. The total acreage of those two parcels is plus or minus eight point four acres. The area to be rezoned to general commercial is approximately one point nine eight acres. Uh, this is the entirety of the eight point four acres in question. Uh, it does run on Thomas Sumter Highway. It is just, uh, east of Kelsey and Farms. Uh, and as you had asked at the previous meeting, the APZ actually is just on the west side of this site. The property is outside of there. It is currently undeveloped. As you can see, it is split zone. This is a result of the, um, back in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, three hundred feet from the center line of all of our major corridors got zoned to general commercial. And instead of carrying that to the full depth of existing parcels and tracks, it just cut off and stopped. So we do end up with properties that run on Thomas Sumter Highway, Cameron Highway, Broad Street, all of our major corridors into the community, that may have portions of their properties that are zoned that are cultural, but confrontages are general commercial. So the area that's proposed to be rezoned to general commercial ranges in, uh, a width of anywhere from sixty-five to eighty-five feet running the full length of the property. When we look at rezoned request, we look at what the comprehensive land use plan says. In this instance, it is in the military protection planning area. The military protection and planning area is supportive of any rezoning activity that limits potential residential density. In this case, commercial zoning does do that, uh, as residential uses are not by right in the G C zoning district, they are conditional uses. Additionally, it's influenced by the comprehensive plan designation of, um, conservation preservation. The conservation preservation designation on this property is the result of previous flood plain maps. In October of twenty twenty-two, we adopted updated maps that actually shifted that flood plain boundary off of this property. So at the end of this year, when we do our five-year comprehensive plan update, the land use map is going to be updated to reflect that the entire tract is in the military protection planning area and not influenced by conservation preservation. But in large, the request to rezone this portion of the property to general commercial is in alignment with the comprehensive land use plan. Planning Commission does recommend approval of this request. It will consolidate the property into one, uh, singular zoning district, and it does align with best practices. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Prior to action on second reading, county council will hold a public hearing. I now declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against RZ number twenty-four oh six, please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record. Hearing none. The company is closed. We approve a second reading. Second, the moving property section that we have second reading on RZ twenty-four oh six. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ms. Truman, RZ twenty-four oh seven.
RZ twenty-four oh seven is at ten thirty-three Boulevard Road and also four oh eight and four ten East Red Bay Road. The applicant is Jeffrey Davis, as the property owner. This is a request to rezone two parcels of land totaling point eight acres from the agricultural conservation district to, as shown, is a strike through from general commercial to neighborhood commercial. As you'll recall, at first reading, uh, the motion from council was to rezone the property to neighborhood commercial. So this presentation is meant not to reflect that. A view to the property is in question. Just to the north is a church, to the south is undeveloped property, to the east is some residential and unused property, and then to the west is a convenience store across Red Bay Road, or Boulevard, I'm sorry. Uh, there is a single family dwelling on this property, but it is in the intent of the applicant to rezone the property, uh, for future commercial use. At this time, they're considering doing a used car lot on the property, which is a conditional use of the neighborhood commercial zoning district. The existing pattern of zoning in the area is neighborhood commercial both to the south and west of this site, with everything to the north and to the east being agricultural conservation, with the exception of the residences across Boulevard Road, um, to rezone, aren't I? When we look at rezoned request, we look at what the comprehensive land use plan designation is, and in this case, it is a priority commercial mixed use mode. This is an area where we expect a mix of commercial and residential development. Generally, neighborhood supporting commercial development in this area, given the existing size and scale of commercial activity in the area right now, um, would be appropriate. Uh, neighborhood commercial is, uh, a diverse district. It does allow a variety of things that our neighborhood's supporting, and it does allow the applicants' proposed use to be done as a conditional. Uh, Planning Commission did recommend rezoning the property to neighborhood commercial and a first reading county council's actions incurred with this. Rezoned the property to neighborhood commercial is in alignment with the comprehensive plan. It would be more compatible if it exists to commercial zoning areas of East Red Bay and Boulevard Road. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I did have one person reach out to me physically in our office. It was from the church. They just wanted more information on it, and when I explained that to them, my understanding was that the church didn't have any concerns, but I'll refer to anybody from the help of this here this evening.
Chairman, I do have a question. First, I would like to thank you for being transparent and telling us what the development is proposed to be. We didn't know that during the first, um, hearing. Um, and then I want to ask, um, will the ingress and egress be on Boulevard or will it be on Red Bay?
There is actually, if you look at the map, there's actually a road just to the north of the site. Because of D O T spacing requirements, my suspicion is that they're going to be required to bring their access off of that road to go to Boulevard as part of the site plan process. Otherwise, their driveway will be too close to intersection.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? This is a second reading also. Prior to action on second reading, council will hold a public hearing on this. RZ twenty-four oh seven, I now declare the public comment portion open. Anyone wishing to make any comments for or against RZ twenty-four oh seven, please proceed to the podium. Seeing none, public comment is closed. We approve a second reading. Second, the moving property section that we have. Second reading on RZ twenty-four oh seven, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Please say aye. Honors number twenty-four oh three.
Uh, this is a request that brought forward by staff. It is to amend Article one H four E and one H four C of the zoning and development standards ordinance to close a loophole that would allow the board of zoning appeals to grant variances to special exception criteria. Um, as we discussed in ladies committee earlier this evening, Article five lays out performance criteria for certain buildings, uses, and projects. And in particular, Article five B three lays out specific, uh, policy established review criteria for special exception uses. These uses are uses that require approval through the Board of Zoning Appeals in a public hearing process, because they have been considered by the community to require a higher level of review and specialized criteria to make them more compatible with adjacent uses. Um, the Board of Zoning Appeals is an appointed board by, completed by a, quote, the city council and county council. It's four members from the city, five members from the county. It is a quasi-judicial board, so its decisions are appealable to the circuit court. Um, the V O A is required to review their special exception uses against general review criteria that are outlined in one H four C two and the five B three of zoning ordinance. We have been asked in the past if variances to the five B three special exception use criteria can be sought. Um, this ordinance amendment seeks to firmly answer this question with a clear, uh, with clear language that states that the Board of Zoning Appeals is the board to grant variances to special exception use criteria, uh, should not be permitted. In particular, we seek to add language to the ordinance. Uh, the, the things that you see on the screen that are in gray are the existing code. The proposed language that we would add are the green, uh, to one H four E two, which basically says, um, the border line appeals cannot grant a variance, the effect to which would be to provide review from a special asylum review criteria outlined in Article five B three for certain hazardous and or potentially disruptive land development activities. Further, we reveal to make changes to one H four B three, which deals specifically with special exceptions, to make it clear that if the Board of Zoning Appeals is going to modify a request to make it more compatible, uh, that modification is to impose additional standards, not to lessen the standards that are part of the five B three criteria. The language that you see in the green is what's being proposed, and then the words that you see struck out will be removed from the existing code. Planning Commission is recommending approval of this request. Uh, this proposed amendment does remove the ability of the V O A to grant variances of the five B three standards. Uh, these criteria are certain conditions that were set by county council and the allowance for special uses on specific property. Uh, we believe it's appropriate that if those standards are to be changed, that should be done through legislative action and not through a quasi-judicial board. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
One more. Public comment. You have a vote here? Yeah. Yeah. Public comment. Uh, because this is a second reading also, we have a public comment. Question, I now declare a public comment section open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Honors number twenty-four oh three, please proceed to the podium. Seeing none, public comments closed. Make a motion to defer, get information from staff, and send this, these changes. Second, we have a motion in second to defer, in order to get additional information from staff in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Please say aye. I have a motion to defer.
Um, Chairman, may I make a clarification of your direction that this comes out on the next agenda?
Indeed. It's up to time. Okay, Honors twenty-four one zero zero two.
Mr. Chairman, council members, good evening again. Uh, this is Budget Ordinance twenty-four one zero zero two. It's authorizing issuance of sale of general obligation bonds, better known as accounting annual bond ordinance. Uh, this is what we use to purchase equipment and capital items for the county's operating budget. What is proposed tonight, again, not exceed three point five million dollars, will include buffer guards for ambulances. Uh, detention center will get interior fencing, food service flats, body scanner upgrades, vertical lifts, body cameras, lab scan machine upgrades. Uh, the sheriff's office will get GPS trackers, upgrade outdated A V system, intelligent units upgrades, uh, and furniture for the sheriff's attorney's office. Uh, Crystal Lakes will purchase a new mower for their operations. Parks and Recreation will do mowers, as well as an all-terrain utility cart. Uh, I T department will do upgrades to the law enforcement data center, countywide computer replacement, network cable upgrades, and deep freeze software, and that's what they'll do, the I T department. Public buildings, as you know, we have a number of those, there'll be a significant amount of upgrades to those in the judicial center. There will be some interior hang done. The library will receive a new A C unit. Uh, summary court flooring will be replaced, South Sumter Resource Center flooring and an A C unit. Um, there will be five community centers that would have, um, new parking lots, resurface parking lots, as well as a new A C control unit within. Uh, the civic center will have flooring upgrades, as well as a new A C unit. And the detention center will get a door. Uh, clerk of court will get additional chairs for the jury. Uh, shares, a big, large portion of this capital are the shares, new vehicles. Uh, we purchased fifteen new vehicles along with the equipment necessary. Uh, the recreation department will get a truck. And then there will be three various department pickups and four various department vehicles. Those are used to replace high mileage and high maintenance vehicles throughout the year as the, as the program requires. So that's all I have for the capital bond request, three point five million dollars.
Okay, I now declare a public hearing open. Anyone speaking, wanting to speak for or against the, uh, Honors twenty-four one oh two, please proceed to the podium. Hearing none. Public comments closed. Remove for, for second. The moving property section that we approve, the bond ordinance amendment number twenty-four one zero zero two, all in favor? Please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Honors twenty-four one zero zero three, Mr. Nixon.
Chair, council members, this is the county's operating budget ordinance, which the council has been reviewing and discussing for a number of weeks now. Uh, the budget process, just to kind of give a history for those in the audience, the county's budget process actually started in early February. Uh, that's when the, uh, county department heads enter into an accounting system their request for the year. Uh, that information's then reviewed by the finance department and, uh, on a line item basis, we discuss all the variables, uh, within those departments. After that meeting, that's when the administrative staff, uh, along with finance, meet with department heads per their request, so that we can discuss items within those line items to make sure that we have a good understanding of what their budget request is. And then once all that's compiled, then we bring that information to county council for county council to review. So at this time, we're, we're ready to present council tonight after a number of county budget workshops that started back on April the twenty-third, uh, and were, of course, at May twenty-eighth and ninth, for second reading. Uh, general fund revenues at sixty-two million one hundred and ninety-six thousand three hundred and six dollars as the revenue. General fund expenditures at sixty-two million six hundred and one thousand ninety-six dollars, or a negative balance of four hundred and four thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars, which we propose to be appropriated from the fund reserve of Sumter County for balance for second reading.
Mr. Nixon, prior to us having public hearing on the Honors, I'd like to make a motion to amend the proposed ordinance to add to request from the Veterans Affairs Office in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for personnel request as requested by Ms. Bronson. Second. I have a motion in second to add, uh, the request from the D A's partner, uh, to the budget. Are they in the discussion? Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to identify and ask her to stand as Valerie Bronson, who is the Sumter County Veteran Affairs Officer.
Best in state.
Mrs. Bronson, this is Bronson put in a request for an additional manpower in order to meet the increased workload that they are having. Ms. Bronson has a strong desire to prepare timely service to the sixteen thousand two hundred and seventy-one veterans that live in Sumter, South Carolina, that generates one point five billion annually in economic impact. Sumter County has the most veterans per capita in South Carolina, with thirteen point two percent of the residents being veterans. Because of Ms. Bronson's dedication to the overall welfare of veterans and a strong desire for timely service, she was selected the most outstanding veteran in the state of South Carolina in twenty nineteen. South Carolina in 2019. As you know, I've been keeping a record of my comrades who have passed, and I use the Sump item bitch word to identify them. And I've been doing that since December of 2020. And during that time, from December 2020 to May 28, 24 of this year, I have identified over 525 veterans in South Carolina that passed away during the pandemic. Age range from 27 to 102. Yesterday, Memorial Day ceremony that was held at the Sump Veterans Park Flag Park, we have retired only Major General George F. Bowman, the son of the original Tuskegee Avenger Leroy Bowman, who was a Sump resident citizen. General Bowman made these two statements that I want you to be aware of, and that's why I appreciate what you have done. He said, "If you want to give someone flowers, give them flowers today." In other words, they can't see flowers on their grave. So if you want to show your appreciation to veterans, show it to them while they are living. He also said that if you care about someone, show your caring today. And what we've done was showed our caring to the veterans by proving, which was in doubt, Ms. Bronson getting the manpower that she needs. There have been two terms, and I'm going to end with this, in my life that have been very important to me. One of them was my 21-year marriage to my late wife, Mary Brockington, who is a mother of Dr. Alexander Batton that sits there. And the other part of my life was the 27 years that I served in the United States Air Force. And I see one of the gentlemen there, Chief Griffin, sitting there, who I served. And I see all the veterans, and it didn't matter whether it was red, blue, Republican, Democrat, young, old, male, female, we all had the same commitment to this country, and that was the freedom of America. And we was willing to make the ultimate sacrifice to make sure that happened. So I want all of you veterans who came here today, God bless you for what you have done for this country. And I want to thank this council for having the courage to do what they should have done without discussing. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
We got a motion in a second to amend the ordinance, Mr. Nixon, to add your request from the Veterans Office, since this is an amendment from, it requires five votes to pass a super majority. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Nixon.
Chairman, based on the action just now taken by county council, the general fund expenditures will now be $62,626,560, with an adjustment to the general fund reserve usage from 404 to 429,750,000. That's the balance budget again at $62,626,560. That's what we propose for second reading tonight, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, there's also one other basic services issue we need to make an adjustment on, and that is the solicitor's request. If you could please share with all of us again what his request was. You have that, Mr. Nixon?
Chairman, I'll check, see if we have that in our budget package.
While our administrator is looking for it, of course, as we all know, when the solicitor is understaffed, that means that individuals remain incarcerated for a longer period of time because they can't get to court. They can't get to court because the solicitor does not have the staff to process the cases in a timely order. And so the solicitor came before council and made a request to hire attorneys to help process the cases that come before our court system. And when we talk about basic services, certainly this is something that we should make an adjustment for as well.
Since you have brought that up, Mr. Washington, I still again point out that the solicitor has $1.2 million in his fund balance that he can use.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that so much, and thank you. I would suggest that fund balances are just that, fund balances. Government was established to fund basic services. This is a basic service. He has come to us with a request, and I got to tell you, Mr. Chairman, with some of the other requests that I have seen from some of the other areas and the dollar amount associated with it, I certainly think that the public would want to make sure that the solicitor is funded just as we have funded other agencies that provide basic services without them having to go into their fund balance.
We're having to go into our fund balance to balance the budget. He can go into his fund balance for $170,000.
Mr. Chairman, I think county administrator.
Chairman, there's actually two requests. The first request for additional personnel, three paralegals, that's $110,720. And then he also requests a 6% quota, which is estimated to be $107,426. That's the total request.
Mr. Chairman, the request for legal counsel, $106,000, I think that's for attorneys, is that right, Mr. Nixon?
Well, that's two, uh, two paralegals.
Three paralegals, sorry. Three paralegals were the original request, yes.
You have a motion, Mr. Washington?
Well, the request on our May 21 document for personnel request, it says solicitor's office, two paralegals. So evidently, and that's for $110,000.
That is correct, it's two, I'm sorry, we're reading a different line. Sorry, it is two, sorry, with the benefits, yes.
And let me continue. You know, sometimes, and I made the statement, that people think Chip Finney, our solicitor, is coming to request money for the Finney offer, but he's coming to request money to support Sump County judicial system, to make it more effective in getting the people to court. What we have is a logjam where people are staying in the detention center because he does not have the manpower, personnel, to move those cases forward. And now those cases sit there sometimes for two, three years. And I was surprised when I asked, I said, "Well, how much does it cost to keep an inmate in detention center for a year?" And I was shocked when they said $60,000. I said, "My goodness, you mean it costs that much? So if we can move those people out of there faster, this, it will pay for itself, just the money that we will make will pay for itself." But we are asking Attorney Finney to look at his savings, his fund balance, and not realizing why he have that fund balance and what it's there for. Because you don't want to start taking your fund balance and paying for personnel, that's going to be a recurring thing, and next thing you know, you don't have fund balance. So I'm for giving the solicitor those two paralegals because we have to move the logjam that we have out at the detention center. And we have to move it. We can't keep going to pay $60,000 to keep an inmate in because we don't have the staff to process him through the system or earth through the system. So I'm going to agree with my colleague and hope that we will give and fund the request for those two paralegals in this budget. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on the councilman from Murble Beach Highway's comments, it is a recurring cost. It is a recurring cost for the employer, which in this case would be the solicitor, for retirement contributions. It will be a recurring cost for health insurance contributions, and it would also be a recurring cost for any cost of living increases that county employees would get. So pretty soon, that fund balance is going to be zero. This is our job. We got to make the hard decisions. We have to find the money. And just to take this a little bit further, as you know, Mr. Chairman, I have requested that this council do a zero-based budget, meaning go line by line, find out where the fat is, and you probably create a lot of revenue to address basic services, which is exactly what this is. But we have refused to do a zero-based budget. I think I remember one of my council colleagues saying in the back that we hadn't done a line by line in 20 years, 20 years. So we don't know, well, the council has made it, he can speak for himself, he made it in the back, said he hadn't done it in 20 years.
Never mentioned 20 years. You put that.
No, no, it's in the minutes. We can have it standing, read the minutes right now. You call it, because it's in the minutes. You call the shot. We can go as far down the rabbit hole as you want to go.
Mr. Washington, you have a motion?
I think councilman from Murble Beach Highway has a motion.
No, he did not. He said he would go along with you. There was more motion.
Okay, the motion is to fund the solicitor's request, and I would request a roll call vote by board.
I have a second. Second. We have a, any further discussion?
Question, whether the, is that for both of his requests, the cost of living and the two paralegals?
Yes, but if you would like to divide the question, I'm happy to divide the question.
I think, you know, because of the restraint that has been on the budget, I think we would be doing our due diligence to allow him a part of it. And that is, that's bringing from all the discussions that we had in our workshop. And, you know, the public wasn't privileged to hear the, all the discussions, but there were a lot of fruitful discussions behind what we are doing and the way that we are doing it. And so if you would, sir, consider dividing it where maybe, you know, and we know just how important it is for the solicitor for that and the reasons why he's asking. And I'll take it a little farther. One of the comments that was made, and it came from me, that our facility, our detention center is designed to be a detention center. But because of the amount of detainees, there are supposed to be detainees, but it has become like a prison, I hate to say that, it has become like a prison because of the length of time our detainees are having to serve. They serve like prisoners, not like detainees waiting to hear what their next steps are going to be. And it sounds like, you know, we are just making frivolous decisions. However, I don't think there's anyone up here that is more conservative than I am. And I'm going to be just right there, but I really don't think there's anyone up there that is more conservative than I am. And I'm willing to support that, and not the possibility, and the reason why not the possibility is because we have so many county employees and they're not going to get 60%. So I think it'll be fair to just look at the first part of this request if we're going to consider giving, you know, helping him with those two paralegals that he is so desperately asking for and needing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Shallow, I am happy to divide the question and your request. So, Mr. Chairman, the request would be for council to fund the two paralegals, that's the motion.
I second that. Any further discussion? Hearing all in favor, please say aye.
No, I have requested a voice, a roll call vote, so, Mr. Chairman, raise your hand.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, back to the ordinance, please let the legislature. We have voted to add the Veterans Office request into the budget. We will not have a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the budget, if ordinance, please proceed to the podium. State name, go ahead. Hearing none, but request is closed. All in favor of approving the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That's right. Thank you.
Okay, budgetary. Five to two, that's, we're two extensions, sorry. Ordinance number 245.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, let me introduce the ordinance 24100, before the public hearing. This is an ordinance to approve an even for ingress and egress to a property owner who is going to convey some property to Sump County. The property that, property owner is going to convey to Sump County will cause him to lose his footage on Frierson Road in order to have, allows this property owner to have access to Frierson Road, this easement, allow the property owner to be able to get in and out. This man has a copy of the easement, the D opponent, and it just references a plaque, the man who has the plaque that he's, uh, he's there. And that's the, that's the, we can go over this, scroll down a little bit. There we go. So what you have there is just an architect's rendering of what we have currently, the top boulder property, so we have a EMA station, and the lower one is the existing fire station. That strip of land between the two is the land that you need, that's the way the property owner gets, you know, from Frierson Road. You go to the next street, please. So the guide portion shows property we're going to acquire, the property owner, the one's property to the west, which is oriented to the north. And that strip of land that's shown on the bottom, 25 foot easement, is the easement we're going to give back to that property owner, so the property owner can get in and out, this property, their property, to the Frierson Road. And then once it's built out, that shows the proposed new fire station and 25-foot driveway in the south of the border. So I'm going to take any questions, or public hearing?
This is a second reading also, which will have a public hearing. Public hearing for this ordinance is now open. Anyone wishing to speak to council or against this ordinance, please proceed to the podium. Hearing none, public comments closed. Approve, second that we have 241005. have issued, twenty four one zero zero five. No further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
New business capital penny sales tax presentation.
Wilson, Chairman, this is council, council members. Tonight, we're pleased to introduce our capital penny sales tax commission with the chairman, Mr. Earl Wilson, a well-respected member of our community for a number of years, and also a free-time capital penny sales tax member with a great deal of experience, and I believe he has some information he would have to present to the council tonight, Mr. Earl Wilson.
Good evening, and good evening, Chairman and council members. I am Earl Wilson, and it's an honor and a privilege to serve as the chairman of the twenty twenty four capital profit sales tax agreement. I would first like to introduce my fellow commission members. Starting on the front row on first, Ms. Nancy Wiggins, Representative Mayesville. Yes, Lee Stan. We have Ms. Kimberly Rostenbach, and Representative City, and Ms. Trey Nelson, Representative County, and, and Dave, Representative County, and Mr. Herman McClellan, Lee Stan. This is my fellow commission members. We have work given place and done, the cash that has been put before us, and in a few minutes, I'll present the project that we have put in writing. At this time, I submit, at this time, I respectfully submit the following list of thirty projects to be considered as a referendum question on the twenty twenty four November ballot here in Sumter, South Carolina. And I will present these projects in their ranking order. Number one, emergency radio and patron, thirteen million. Number two, county fire trucks, fourteen million. Number three, state drive truck, five million. Number four, stadium road EMS station, one point five million. EMS avalanches, one million. Industrial infrastructure, two million. Number seven, intersection safety improvement, one point seven five million. And Barbie Richardson Park improvements, two and a half million. Number nine, Patriot Park pickleball courts, two point eight million. Number ten, downtown building improvements and acquisitions, two point seven five million. County paving and resurfacing, twenty one million. Number twelve, stadium road fire station, three million. Fire department training facility, thirteen million. I mean, I'm sorry, one million, number thirteen. Number fourteen, federal state road construction, highway three seventy eight, six million. Number fifteen, state road resurfacing match, ten million. Number sixteen, public service building, three point two five million. Industrial property acquisition, one point five million. And Dillon Park improvement, two point six million. Number nineteen, community park playground improvement, four million. Central Carolina facility upgrade, one million. Mayesville Main Street revitalization, one point five million. Pinewood paving of Rowitz, one point two million. Number twenty three, Edelman Street and downtown parking facility, nine point five million. Elaine Community Center, one point two five million. South Sumter Gem, three million. Harvest Street redesign and streetscape, one point five million. Pinewood sidewalks, three hundred thousand. Community sidewalks and activity pass, three point five million. Airport facility upgrade, one million. And last, number thirteen, community-wide acquisition of the stretch structure, two point five million. Mr. Chairman, after careful and deliberate conversation and debate, our commission unanimously submit this list. We firmly believe these projects will move us forward and best prepare our entire community for generations of growth and prosperity. If council approve these random questions, the registered board of Sumter County may have the opportunity to cast their ballot and help determine the future of this great community. On behalf of my fellow commission members, we thank you for this opportunity to represent all the citizens of Sumter County with this most important task. We remain humbled in our service as our gratitude for this community continues to grow. Mr. Chairman, that is my report.
Mr. Wilson, thank you for your report, and I want to thank the rest of the members of the committee for your diligence, taking the projects that was submitted to you by both the city and the county, and going through that process and ranking them and coming up with this final list of thirty projects totaling a little bit over a hundred and twenty four million dollars. That is what is expected to be raised by the penny. So thank you for what you've done, all of you. Thank you. An approval for three. We're approaching the second that we have first reading of the ordinance twenty four one zero zero four, that allows the capital penny sales tax. Any discussion? Mr. Chairman.
I think it's important for the citizens to know that the list of projects that the committee reviewed and came back with were projects that were offered by Sumter County and the city of Sumter. And so I don't want the commission to be held liable for any of the projects that are on the list because they were only given the list by the folks who were elected. So I just want to make that clear. I watched the audience as some of the projects were read, and I could see some heads shaking on some of the allocations for specific projects. But I just wanted you to know that it wasn't the commission that offered the projects. It was Sumter County Council and the city of Sumter. That's where the responsibility lies. That's all for now, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to also point out that the commission has made their decision to come up with the thirty projects. This Sumter County Council can only vote this list up or down. We cannot make any changes to it by law. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of first reading of ordinance twenty four one zero zero four, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading passed. Thank you. Uh, committee reports, uh, Mr. Easys, Land Use Committee.
We get a land use committee meeting this afternoon, and I've discussed the items that we could do, and talk to county council tomorrow. Ordinance number. Four eight twenty four oh three, and we had some recommended changes that we will send back to them, and that's why we deferred tonight, and they'll bring it back to us hopefully by the next meeting or whenever they get it, in conjunction with our panel term. That's all I have to say.
We did have a special meeting of Sumter County Council, but you just heard the exact same information that was presented to us by Mr. Wilson, so I won't go into any further than that you necessarily. Come now to report from council members or other units, trainees, and our partners. Hearing none, monthly reports, Mr. Blanding?
Council members who have, who have packed up information about the farm to table dinner on May 31st, if you're interested, please contact me. And the monthly reports for the public works department, senior pack director. That's it.
County administrator report, Mr. Wilson.
Um, it's chair, I'll quickly, about the kangaroo conversation, I apologize, there's a breakdown in communication, but I'm more than happy to address the issue after the meeting, but what I would propose, I know that we've taken this topic up a number of times, and I thought that all the questions have been addressed. Any new information, we're more than happy to review that, uh, but what I will ask, and I'll certainly meet with them after the meeting if they'd like, is to put their requests in writing, so that we might address it in writing, and then provide the information back to county council, uh, but we're just not aware of any new information, but there is, we're more happy to do that as well. And I, I do have some additional information in my office about the photos. I'm happy to share that with you and cover that information as well, but, um, that's all we have to say.
Thank you. Coming out to the public comment portion of the agenda for the public. Anyone who desires to speak, council, uh, please proceed to the podium. State your name for the record. Public comment portion is now.
Mr. Chairman, yes. For while that's, folks are preparing to come up, if I understood correctly, the administrator said that on the kangaroo land issue, we would do, what is that? I want to try to clear it, Senator.
Councilman, what I was trying to say is that I'm more than happy to address it after this meeting, um, and then if they have any other follow-up questions, I'll ask them to put that in writing so that we can address it back in writing because, uh, the information that has been shared, uh, was one, I know, I'm familiar with this conversation happening after a previous meeting, uh, and addressed the questions, and we had a couple of meetings with county council trying to address the questions, but we understood it. And if there's any new information, we're more than happy to continue to do that, but either way, if they just put their request in writing, we'll respond in writing, so the county council will obviously have the information, and then if you deem it necessary to have additional meaning, we're more than happy to do that as well.
So, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the administrator's update on that. Here's what I would offer. I think what he's suggesting is good, but I will still also have a motion. And I still want it on the agenda for the next meeting because we have to make these people right, and what we did wasn't right. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Anyone wishing to speak to council, please proceed to the podium.
Good afternoon, good evening, uh, councilman and, uh, chairman McCanney. My name is Mara Washington. Um, I just wanted to make a comment, and I'll put it in the form of question, an additional question, a clarified question pertaining to the county's procurement ordinance. I would like to know when the county is permitted to not, uh, follow the procurement ordinance, again, going back to this Dozer purchase that was stated that there were no uh, bids received on that. So I would like to question the procurement ordinance, when we are following it, when we are not. And I also have just now, you know, reviewed the penny progress project list, and I would also have a question to council about any projects that were on existing past penny project, um, uh, that were approved, uh, status of each project, um, and any that were not, uh, secured, and what happens to funding allocated to those projects when they don't go forward? That's my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
I just want to give it for the other chance first. Uh, good evening, council chairman. I'm Dr. Alexandra Bate, and I was council and Bate's daughter. Um, I would just like to, once again, ask you guys to please consider my suggestion of addressing shooting in residential areas of the county. As we know, innocent bystanders are being shot down in our streets. People are being shot and killed at traffic lights. I recently learned from an esteemed member of our sheriff's department that, yes, there was an individual in their driveway shot by just bullets from their neighbor, just randomly shooting, and she was afraid to press charges. So when something like that happens and a citizen is afraid to press charges, it is up to you guys to, to now step in to keep people safe. And people in residential areas in the county should not be shooting when they are living so close. People can get killed. My neighbors, the ones who were shot up a few weeks ago, just came back. And, I mean, our neighborhood is a decent place, so it's not like I'm talking about a horrible place. It's decent. And this happened right next to our house, and the bullets could have come and shot me, my dog. So I know the whole problem can't be solved overnight, but at least you guys can take small steps and try to minimize innocent people being shot in the crossfire. And I also learned by a member of our sheriff's office that even the sheriff himself is concerned about this. He's trying to look at old ordinances to see if there's something that can eliminate these shootings in the residential area. So if you guys can please address it, work with him, but it's very important for our community lives to exist. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bate.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jamal Jones. I just have one question. I want to make sure I heard correctly that the county council voted down two paralegals to assist the, the log jam that's at the prison, but yet I'm looking at something where you're going to vote eventually on pickleball?
It's two different subjects, but yeah, I'll talk to you about it in a minute. Okay. Mr. Chairman, actually, that's not accurate. We did give the solicitor the two paralegals, what he voted down was the six percent increase. I'm just trying to help you out.
We voted down the paralegal.
We voted down the paralegal?
Yes. Yeah, it was four to three.
We're in the public hearing. Anybody else? Mr. Wilson, Jones?
Sir.